This conference will now be recorded.
It's 5:30. Let's go ahead and start our meeting. A roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Stover?
Here.
Mr. Tweedy?
Here.
Mayor Ward?
Here. Could somebody shut the doors back there so we could hear? Ma'am, there's a seat right up front here.
If you want to participate in the opening prayer, pledge allegiance, please stand.
Father, we thank you for allowing us to come together and have this meeting. We just ask that you be with each of the people that are wishing to speak tonight. Help them to speak their ideas clearly and help them to be understanding. Father, be with us as we go through the rest of the seating.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any additions or dilations to the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. We would like to add a consent agenda item number five. And that would be a resolution authorizing the city of Arcana City to enter into a change order agreement, number one, with McGuire Iron to add a single color Creekstone Farms logo to the outside of the Gulf Water Tower for an amount not to exceed $20,000.
They're paying for that.
Pay you that.
All right.
I move we approve the addition to the agenda.
Second.
I want one more change. I want to move the Tony's resolution up to the top of the new business. From the public department. Up to the top of new business.
Five, one, Earth.
Yeah.
Five, if you go to four, I guess. Go to four.
Yeah.
Says Public Services about halfway down the page on the backside.
Right.
Number one. To the top.
Yeah, I just didn't want him to hear it all night. Can I get it early in the morning?
PEC.
Right.
Yeah. Well, I'll amend my agenda. Move that.
Okay. Second. Okay, then second. Any discussion on it? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion through the agenda.
I mean, we approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda. Number one is approved the August 16, 2024 regular meeting minutes as written. Number two, set a date September 3, 2024 to hold a public hearing for the 2025 budget. Number two A, consider a resolution approving the notice of budget hearing for the publication and for the city of Arcana City. Number three, a resolution authorizing a public meeting of the government body to attend a land bank board trustees meeting at 5:00 PM Tuesday, September 3, 2024 in the city commission room at city hall located 118 West Central Avenue in Arcana City. Number four, resolution authorizing the city of Arcana City to enter into a contract with Mr. Mickey and friends represented by Mickey. Mickey's meant to rent the Northwest Community Center. And number five, a resolution authorizing the city of Arcana City to enter a change order agreement. Number one with McGuire Iron Incorporated to add a single collar Creekstone Farms logo to the outside of the Gulf Water Tower for the amount not to exceed $24,000.
And you want to move number three, item number three, the PEC thing on to your consent agenda?
No, no, that's going to be a, no.
Okay.
They'll just go on top of the new business.
The motion we approve that consent agenda is written.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Any discussion on it? Okay, if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I think there's been a lot of confusion on this, this public hearing we're getting ready to have on Wilson Park. How many are here tonight to talk about the old property? Potential housing on the old property. How many, can you raise your hands?
Say again?
How many people are here tonight to talk about the old property? Hospital side where we're talking about some townhouses?
I am.
Okay. Okay, well, on that, we're going to go to the items not on agenda tonight. If that's not on agenda. The only things on agenda tonight is Wilson Parks, which is the spray pad and the playground equipment, so.
And if you want to speak on that, you need to sign in.
I have.
Okay.
And that will be at the end of the meeting when we come in.
Rosemary, I think I want to have Nick go first and maybe you go second, if that's all right.
So, talking about the CDVG grant application that we're hoping to apply for, advantage of these dollars that are coming from Commerce's community development block grant. There's $800,000 that we could utilize specifically for Wilson Park only. This grant would be utilized to incorporate a splash pad. It's been a long conversation for many years here in Arc City. This is specifically a splash pad, not a fountain of any sort.
Just speak up just a little louder, please.
Sure. What we're trying to incorporate is splash pad, not a fountain. It's about 3,600 square feet. You water to waste, push button activation. So that way, when the water's flowing, we're not utilizing chemicals, extra manpower costs for chemicals. So it'd be much more efficient process. And it's why they call it watered waste. So specifically for that splash pad that we utilize in Wilson Park, we'd also want to try to take advantage of our playground equipment. That playground equipment is about 22, 23 years of age, so it's outdated. We need to renovate. We need to bring in something brand new. We need to really bring in Wilson Park, that playground equipment that can attract people not only from Arc City, but also from surrounding towns. So how can we bring in people with such a great opportunity for branding park equipment? And that's what we're hoping to take advantage with the CDVG grant that's available. So this grant specifically only covers a splash pad and the playground equipment for Wilson Park, and that is it. Rosemary will talk more about the numbers and moving forward with that. Any questions?
That, that, those, those items will be placed in current Wilson, not across the street, but it'll be in current Wilson Park.
Correct. Only in Wilson Park. It is not going to the old hospital lot. Thank you just for renovating that area.
Okay. Just want to make sure that was clear. Yes, sir.
A year or two ago, when this was brought up about the splash pad, there was a discussion about moving the old playground equipment to veterans' place. I haven't heard any more about that. Is that something?
That was, that was brought up in the meeting on Friday. And the equipment that can be moved, we are, that, that's an option. The problem is, like you said, it's 22, 25 years old. So some of that equipment is unsafe. And so if it's going to cause a hazard, or the, you know, it's going to be a safety hazard, we're not going to do that. And so I think you can understand sometimes equipment 25, 30 years old, you know, we try to refurbish it, do what we can, but sometimes once it becomes junk, it just needs to be thrown out.
Another thing I might mention is the fact that we can't get parts to fix it with. They no longer are available.
That's correct.
Are you then going to remove all playground equipment from Wilson Park?
And we'll replace it.
Replace it.
Replace it.
Replace it. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. With all the new playground equipment.
Right. Is this for the whole park?
Wilson Park.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, when we go into public hearing, you guys will be able to talk. Right now, we're just, we're giving you an outline before we go into public hearing. We'll have, you'll have plenty of time to talk in public here. All right, go ahead.
Okay. Well, as Nick said, and as you mentioned earlier, council members, this application is to put a splash pad and new playground equipment in the existing Wilson Park just up the street a few blocks. The grant application is for $800,000. Total project cost is $1,140,968. This notice was published on August 10 in the Cali County Traveler as required by the application. After we're through with the public hearing, any questions, comments? Is, there will be two resolutions for the commission to consider as part of the grant application. This application is due November the 1st. They are hoping to award grants by the end of this year so that the awardees can move forward fairly fast in 2025. If we are awarded, we will have two years to complete the design and construction and close out with the Kansas Department of Commerce. For those that are not aware, this was the agency that we used with the cost share to redo Summit Street between Radio Lane and Kansas. So the city has been fortunate to receive a grant, and that was done in a very timely manner. So I think we will rate fairly well with, with Raiders in Topeka.
I have a question. Since we've been working on this project for several years, we've got a pretty good chance of getting it. I mean, because it's been on, I mean, it's been going for quite some time.
Right. Yes, sir. And two years ago, CDVG Community Development Block Grant kind of revamped a little bit of their focus on what they wanted to fund. And City Parks has become one of the higher applications that have been funded because they realize that quality of life is, is very important for a community, for citizens to have a place to recreate, to walk on trail, sidewalks. And even though water sewer streets are very important, there, like I said, there is also, also that quality of life issue that you need to take care of in your community.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. Do you work for the city?
No, I do not. We're contracted with the city to write the grant.
I get you.
Well, if this grant's approved, does it have to be used at Wilson Park, or can we use it in another park?
You have to, you have to use it for what we submitted for.
If we wanted to use it somewhere else, it'd have to be submitted that way.
That's why we specifically have to put in the public hearing notice what we're applying for funding. It's not a bait and switch type situation.
That's the reason why we're having a public hearing.
Yes.
Is any other questions? Okay, if not, I'm going to make a motion we hold a public hearing to consider applications for submitted to the Kansas Department of Commerce for small city community development block grant, CD, or CDVG funds for Wilson Park improvements. Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So the public hearing is started, so anybody wants to talk, you have a talk right now.
If you'd like to speak about the, about the Wilson Park project, you can speak.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
To make it to another park, what's Harris Park?
That is up to the commission.
I would say if it's already, we've got plans, we've got, we've got one submitted, I would say probably too late.
You say that the grant is $800,000?
Yes.
So where did we come up with the other, the rest of it?
Yeah, so the total project, like you said, was $1,140,980. So 800,000 would be the CBDG grant. We have an application in for 50,000 at VJ Wilkins. We have $130,000 budgeted for playground equipment. We have 58,000 in special rec funds. And then we have 19,431 in CIP dollars. And then we would plan on doing approximately $83,537 in in-kind work. That would be where our, our guys would go out and do the dirt work, remove the old equipment, things like that, that we're, that we have the equipment and the manpower to do, so.
So that takes care of all of it then?
Yeah.
So nothing out of the taxpayers' pocket?
Well, I mean, the, the, the local funds are taxpayer funds. They're already.
But they've already been allotted.
Yes, there already been a.
Nothing extra.
Tiffany, do you have pictures on your, on this, bringing up the splash pad and the equipment?
There is a whole packet. The plenary packet is in there.
Okay.
Put it at the item. It would be $1,200,000.
VJ Wilkins, a couple of years ago, donated $250,000 that the city had to give back to them because they needed to complete the project in two years.
Um, I'm not sure on that thing. I know we used VJ Wilkins funds to complete the Farmer's Market Pavilion.
No.
Mr. Mayor, if you're wanting me to record names and addresses of people who are speaking, I have no idea. This public section, so the two that I should be referring to.
State your name so she can write your name.
Donna Beck. I personally like the idea of doing the Wilson Park rather than down by a parish school. It's more visible in Arcana City. It's right on Summit Street. What I want to know is, I'm really disappointed in the farmer's market on how that has been set up. But right now, during the week, it's used as a parking garage, and as you may, goodbye, you see cars in there. With this money, can any of it be diverted towards, and maybe this is another grant, diverted towards adding an add-on to the west side of that building to make it where it's more usable, and then have picnic tables or whatever? Can that be tied into the park?
At this point, I would say no, because it is not listed in what we have published. And I don't know what kind of dollars and cents that would involve, which would obviously increase the project cost.
Okay. Is that something, Mayor, that can be addressed later?
Yeah, we can look into that.
Something is done, and it's not just a stinking parking pad.
Well, that's what that was designed for.
Cars in the neighborhood to park their cars underneath there? That was where events, like Farmer's Market.
Not, they're not supposed to be there during Farmer's Market, but yeah, it's a parking, it's a parking area.
Just to park in there?
Yeah.
That's kind of expensive parking area.
Farmer's Market.
We needed.
Farmer's Market, not parking.
We need to.
It's being used for both.
We needed parking there anyway for the park because it's pretty limited.
When there's an event, that whole thing is used, so putting something permanent would really interfere with, like Taco Lala when we have food trucks. Yeah. Yeah, because we use the entire area during Taco Lala. It's full. And we don't park. I don't think anybody, maybe three or four handicap spots is all we use for parking in there. And I know we use every ounce of that thing during Taco Lala.
And it probably gets used also during band, the public, the public band. I'm assuming that's the legal part. Instead of a long Summit Street and a long side street.
If there's events, it is utilized. I know a lot of times you drive by and it doesn't look like it, but when there's events going on, a lot of times the whole thing is utilized. And it is convenient for people that are older or handicapped to be able to park there and get close to the rotunda. Like for the band and stuff like that. So not necessarily under the Farmer's Market bill?
Not specifically under.
Yeah, all the rest of Congress. I get it for that parking.
Right.
I get it for the open parking and if you have a dance. I just think it's expensive to be having just cars parked. I mean, during the daytime, people could be having a picnic in warm shade. I know this is off the, so let's get back to the park.
Okay. Is there anybody else who wants to talk about the splash pad and the playground, playground agreement? Go ahead, sir.
Senator Electra?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I have a hard time talking. My name's Richard Hensley. I live on North Timber Lane. That's what you need. Thank you for letting me talk. I was on the Wilson Park Improvement Program Committee in 2015.
Yeah, you were one of 12, I think.
Yeah, there was a dozen of us. I was one of them. We spent $50,000 with a VJ Wilkins grant. You have the law company in Wichita, Kansas, do all the improvements. I don't know if you've seen that, where it lays out, how it lays out. I mean, 50.
Yeah, we've got a copy of that, and that's who.
That's what you're looking at.
Yes, and we're working with them, yes.
Good, that's.
That's what the plan we're using is that plan right there.
Well, my only problem is you didn't ask for enough money. I mean, you're only going to get two items out of this. Is this a state or federal grant?
This is a federal grant, and the city is asking for the maximum amount that they can apply for.
For these two items?
For the project in total, yes.
That's strange. I got 3 million, so there you go. So this is a federal rather than a state.
It is federal administered by the state.
Yeah, that's what I thought. They're very limited in their amount of money they give you. I belong to a group called City Parks Alliance. I don't know if you've heard of it or not. They're a national group, and they're the, they're the ones that figure out what parks need, how to do it. They use 40, 40 large cities in the United States to come up with a study on what parks need, how they were, what makes them better. And I get emails from them, and they came up with a, a study called, it's just a national study for neighborhood parks. And they, out of that, they came up with a major park use study. And it's very, very interesting. And there's a lot of money available. If you go through them or find out how, they'll tell you how to get the grants. I mean, $3 million is very, very easy to get. I did it over the phone. So, anyway, they said the ideal park for a park is centrally located. Abundant trees. A loop walking path around the park. We have that. At least one commons area. We got the rotunda. Should be clean and quiet. And then they give you percentages on what makes things work in the park. So walking in the loop will increase your population attendance or park attendance by about 80%. And this is over 40 cities in, in the United States. I'm very familiar with the study that went on in Denver, Colorado, that my relatives live. So every, the biggest thing was every children's playground element that you put in, every one you add increases the attendance by 50%. And this is nationwide. You know, these are, these are.
You repeat that, I couldn't hear you.
In here, in here. For every playground piece that you put in a park, it increases the attendance by 50%. If you have a, a walking loop around your park, that would include, that will, that will increase your park attendance by 80% because that's the senior citizens. They only go to parks to walk. They don't play games. They don't climb on land. So that was one of the things. If you use supervised activities, like a pickleball tournament, basketball loop, hoop contests, things like that, that will increase it by about 48%. We don't have any basketball. I can't figure out why they have a hoop. Banners and posters, that increases your park, park population by about 62%. I was there for about two hours today. Three people. Because it's not a good day for park activities like this. But anyway, we have all the elements for a great park. We just need to take it back. I think the biggest, biggest item is going to be some money, but I talked to people that do this for a living, and they, is to enclose rotunda and make it a three season item. There's only about, as far as I can tell, there's only about 40 of those rotundas left in the United States. That's why they were built. There's still too many existing playgrounds inside.
That's not why they're out.
Yeah. So the company that makes those rotundas, that's what they make. We never had a merry-go-round. We could have before. But anyway, there's one in Indiana that's identical to the one we have.
It's all the same.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, I talked to a company that they manufacture, they call fire station doors. Those are all glass. You can have as many panels up as you want that have protecting, protection for the glass. He said it would be very, very easy to put over there, bronze door openers. It was back in 15. He said, not only will I manufacture about 11 of them for $2,500 a piece. Every section of the rotunda is 25 feet. You want to put in probably 18. Discuss a little bit more. All glass could be manually operated. Only would be able to use the keys to open or closing, but, you know, certainize the year for that. To have these rotundas that are enclosed, they're. I had the, into the draft, my architects at law design company in Wichita, the original park, they drew up a plan for the rotunda only with the lit up part of it. And it was enormous amount of money. So that's, my question is, to make the park viable for more people, you know, it's, it's quality of life. You need to know, parks are only for quality of life. This town is desperately in need of that. So first item on my list was turn the rotunda into a three season item. We need a dog park. There is a gentleman that comes to the park every single day at 10:00 AM and 2:30. And the dog leaves his business about 50 feet from the children's playground area on the east side. And it's every day. I figure either him or the dogs would have passed away, and we'll be relieved of that problem. It's, we need a dog here. And the, they said, if you allow dogs to go with them, children and adults, they like to bring a pet dog. You need to have a fenced in dog park. They have it in Denver, same, it was done in Denver, Westminster. My favorite, I got a dress in the family, this is Westminster. They have fabulous parks, but it embarrassed some of the housing developments. Hardly live in a closed, closed, idyllic community. After they approved the city park, and all the apartment complexes or the, they had to put in swimming pools and a dog area. And that's what people want. So.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, we could, you know, somewhere down the road like that dog thing, we could put an ordinance right there, you know, where they have to clean up their dog, you know. I agree. I agree. Call him around, because I mean, there's a lot of orders, a lot of cities are doing that right now.
We do have.
Almost every park has that.
I guess my question is, have you seen this, have you, have you seen this proposed site plan? Because everything that.
Somebody that designed that.
Then you should know that everything that you just suggested, except for enclosing the, the rotunda?
No, that was.
Is in it.
Yeah.
But that's in it as well. Okay. And that's all in that. And we can only do so much at a time. We've got $800,000. We're going to prioritize, and we're trying to get the best we can with what we've got.
Well, my suggestion is to go through a different entity.
Well, we can add on to, you know, we can add, you know, you know, just leave Randy what you've got there. Maybe we can apply for some of those other grants out there, you know.
There's.
I have a. I have a work session.
I have a good friend, and he is a licensed grant writer. He gets hundreds of thousands of dollars a week in grants. It's unbelievable. He's in the millions. That's how available the money is. The money is there. All you got to do is know where and how to go after it. So, like I said, I just called on the phone. Nick and Andy's told me, I'll just tell them you're, you're my assistant. The guy told me he'd call me back in one week. Tom didn't call me back in two weeks, didn't call, finally called me back at the end of three weeks. He said, Mr. Richard, I, I will give you the grant. You want a 3 million? I'll give you that 3 million. But none of it's a grant. But none of it's a grant. It's all a loan. But you have thirty years to pay it off. But his first question to me was, do you know how bad the financial predicament is for the city of Arc City? I said, I know it's not good, but it's going to get better. We have a new city manager. He said, well, yeah, I'll give you the three million, but the interest is eight point nine nine percent. It just.
Yeah. So, you didn't get three million dollars. Got a loan for thirteen.
I got, I, I got a federal pool agreement. We would in fact get it. He said, you can have it two ways. You can get a lump sum. I said, nope, don't. Our city manager doesn't want a lump sum. It's just a draw. I said, we only need about two million to build a new library, the whole hospital. He said, okay, no problem. I didn't have a problem. Do you ever have a problem getting that kind of money?
Nope.
That's a loan and not a.
That's a loan. That's not a grant.
It's a loan.
It's a loan. But, you know.
You want me to do something again?
Yeah. So, anyway, the, my grant writer friend, he got about three point five million. They bought a building, refurbished it. And then they built parks. They built a hundred miles of bicycle trails. They built a new amphitheater in their new park. I mean, it was unbelievable. It was all federal money. He got it for two percent. This was in fifteen. So, anyway, there's a lot of money out there.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I might as well get on the mound there. John Cyber, thank you for reminding me. Rent of the park. It's, it's breaking my heart. We have a tremendous opportunity here. Also, a tremendous responsibility. This is our central park. It may not be as large as the one in New York City. But its location in the community, if you compare it to Grant Park in Chicago, it's, which is called their front yard. The location of it and the history of it is one of the great historic parks in the state of Kansas. I might mention the, the other one I like is in Palo Alto, it's sixty-six hundred. And their park was donated to them and stipulated that they couldn't build housing or structures on it. So, the people come from all over to see that if you're ever in that area for weddings. This park is, everything in it's over a hundred years old. The park's older than Arcola. It was originally Elm Park and it was named Wilson Park in nineteen twelve. The rotunda he referred to was built to house a Chautauqua, which was a kind of a band of holistic speaking group. And it originally didn't have the floor. And the clamshell stage was built to house the band. We have the oldest city band state of Kansas. The, the steam engine space for itself, it's over a hundred years old, was moved in there in nineteen fifty-five. Jim Andrews drove that in there and they came up that street, the, my Brons turn left and sits right where it is. Interesting thing about the train is that in, in fifty-eight, there, there were some doctors that recommended to the city commission that they close that end, fence it in because of the people, fear of people getting hurt. And there were people that came by train and by cars to come up to get, be able to get on that train before it was fenced in. And the traveler wrote a full-page editorial blasting the city commission and, which they do occasionally, as you may be aware of. But saying, you know, you can get hurt riding a bike or swing set, playing baseball, don't fence it in. So, there were people with signs and stuff and, and the commission decided, well, there was a primary coming up in August and they said, well, let's put it on the ballot. See what the people say. Well, the headline after the election was that fencing train is bashed by the public. So, kind of interesting that the public's view, and that's why it's not fenced in today.
John, I think you're getting off topic of what we were discussing.
Not my mind. Not my mind at all.
Making comments on the eight hundred thousand dollar grant we're applying for.
Yes.
How's that apply to what we're, what you're doing? How's that apply to our grant?
Because I don't want you taking a historic park and it's not a truck stop. It's not a quick trip. So, what you do with it, I can tell you that there are hundreds of people right now that, and you may not be aware of it, that think the park would be better off if you had done nothing. And that shouldn't surprise you. And I will tell you why. An example would be in nineteen seventy-four, we had a state championship tennis tournament here. That's like getting the Super Bowl. They could have done that anywhere. They had it here. And fabulous thing that the rotunda was used for the brackets and teams and coaches and people on blankets snapping and stuff between matches, on chairs as everybody walked. Why did they pick this park? Because it was a beautiful park then. The canopy, the shade, the. So, what I'm saying is, this is not chocolate or park you're messing with. And you have to be very careful. And the, that plan that is in effect from nineteen seventy, nobody's ever approved that. And you can wheel that all you want. But you tell me where anybody voted and approved that. And you don't have to do anything on that. And anything you do doesn't have to be limited to what's on that. I mean, there are other ideas besides fly pads and equipment. You're, you're going to make a plastic plaza out of my historic park. And, and you can, if you want to see where that's done, a historic park and see if you like it. We have another great one right here in Cali County in Winfield, Kansas. And I think everybody would know what that park is. Anybody know a park in Winfield? Island Park? Go out and take a look at it. They filled it with plastic. See how you like it.
Serves the purpose for the city.
I'm sorry?
Serves the purpose for the city and what they did. The kids are out there playing all the time. That's getting people into the park. If we want to go back and say, we did something wrong to the park, we can say we put the train in there. We shouldn't have done that possibly. So.
Oh, absolutely. What we're doing, that's not my point at all.
What we're doing is.
The train has a historical basis in this community. We have a Harvey House here. Only other one was in Winoka in this area. And way before super cheap, this is a railroad town. That's part of our heritage. And everything in that park is, is part of our heritage. The people that have, have spoke there, you know, Bob Douglas spoke there when it was on presidential ticket. I mean, Al Fland. That is, that is our historic park. There, they have parks, you have parks for a lot of things. There are ball parks, historic parks, water parks. There's, there's nothing wrong with your orange and yellow plastic equipment. You've got some a block away at Pershing.
Got some in there right now.
Yes, I understand that. And.
The problem is we're just replacing it. I'm putting a splash pad, which, which for the last eight years, the community has ridiculed the city manager, the city council about how they've, they've taken in wasted funds and how they promised us this and we're going to get this. And so, we start to make the move and then all of a sudden we get ten people, oh, I don't like this. Oh, you know what? I'm not going to let ten people stand in the way of twelve thousand people. It, I'm, I'm sorry, you're in the minority.
Well, I think you might be surprised about that.
I've got fifteen people here and I don't know how many of her here to, to say, don't put in this splash pad. But I've only heard two, or I've only heard one. So, if you, you know, if you can get six people here, we're, we're still half of what I need. I need, I need six hundred people, not six.
Yes, and I told you that I can provide you a list of six hundred, seven hundred people that will tell you, you should have left it alone.
Bring me the list and just bring me the list.
I'll be glad to do that. I'm just, I'm just begging you to think about it. Having the opportunity, also, one, one other thought that, that might help a little bit. If we're going to disagree on stuff, the order that you do things is important. Because obviously you don't want to talk about the other area. You want to do this in a particular order. And you don't want to talk about how you're going to build duplexes in the other area. You want to do it a certain order. And part, there's two reasons for that. One is the order you build stuff, you, you. And, and the other is to get a, a point of consensus. You know, do the things that you agree on. And I, I would be glad to agree to go ahead and connecting the park to the hospital ground. That's not expensive and you'd have pathways. It improves the park, that circle area, and not expensive and people could use it right now. And it would help you see what you've got. You're going to put a splash pad in, you've got to see what the total area we're talking about. To know, is this the right place to do it? Is it going to take up too much space? The other cardinal sin in the park is trying to fill it up. You don't have to fill the park up. It's, it's a park. It's open spaces. Nature, trees. And, and I will tell you that you don't have a consensus on this plan. And I, I'll give you a list of seven hundred people. You get me anywhere where anybody voted on or approved that master plan of destruction. Please.
I had one thing.
Sure.
The alliance of public parks, they have, we kind of relented on splash pads because every part of the country is water deprived. What they're now encouraging, everybody, they said, an email. You get an email saying, reevaluate your splash pads down to what they call spray pads. Spray is missed all the time. You don't have to worry about it. But the consumption is one tenth of a splash pad. So, there are companies that are only building those now. They're, they're manufacturing those splash pads because of the huge water consumption. Especially this bathroom. Now, there's recirculation. That's what they're talking about, spray pads. Kids don't care as long as they want.
Anybody else?
Yes, Kim Turner. The splash pad, if we go with that and then use it, are we moving away from our pool? In years past, it's been hard to keep that pool open. Been a lot of discussion about cost of replacing it or have to eventually let it go. Is any discussion lately this year? I haven't heard anything. That's my question.
Randy, there was a meeting with the rec plant.
Yeah, we're.
Just what, last Tuesday or?
Yeah, yeah, we're still working on that.
There is discussion about maybe pool will have to close?
No, about trying to find a solution for the pool.
Ah, I.
Yeah.
Who does that?
What's that?
Who means something?
City staff, rec staff and engineers.
Mr. Bossy.
It won't take me long. I'm named Jim Bossy. I'm born on a farm out here in South Town. Graduated from high school at forty-nine. And I moved to, I, oh, and I spent forty years west, in fact, in nineteen ninety-one. Anyway, that's pretty awful. But we know it's really hard to turn down that space. But I think we really should consider though, the maintenance of it after the, after everything is built. It's a space to be able to splash it instead of being a lot of maintenance. We already have about a park here in town. Some money, most of them are not hardly used at all. But maybe you could spend some money, fix some of them up a little bit and they would be more used. And I think maybe the Wilson Park, they're really used a lot. For now, I think they're at the, it's our taxes, you know, already high. And my taxes have gone up the last two years, six percent each year. And social security is only two point seven, two point nine, maybe. And so, there's a big difference. Then revenue neutral, I know you're considering that. It says in the paper, it's a small increase, but it's a big increase. And you're the only entity that is exceeding that revenue neutral. Cities, entities like Winfield, none of them are. I don't have a doubt that. Sum it all up. I, I think they, I think we should concentrate on getting more youth grants for the infrastructure such as the city streets and the water systems. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'd like to address his revenue neutral. Last year, when all the others did, we didn't. So, it's just kind of a balancing act.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Donna Bag. And I, I have young grandchildren and they, they lived in Las Vegas, they moved back to town. And they always have a splash pad. Not everybody goes to Wilson Park. And not everybody goes to the swimming pool. Maybe the splash pad, maybe it shouldn't be at Wilson Park if it's going to take up too much room. But we are behind times. For young people, we are behind times. We really need a splash pad. You know, they have it in Ponca City, they have it in Winfield. Kids get so much enjoyment from that that it would bring people in. Maybe it's not the right place at Wilson Park where it's going to take up too much room. But we're behind times for young people that have families, that have children. And they want to go to the splash pad to talk. Bring your people in. Us old people, we're not going to go to the splash pad. Those young people, they're going to go to splash pad.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, if not, I'm going to make a motion. We come out of the public hearing, consider application to the submitted by the Kansas Department of Commerce for Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, CBG funds for Wilson Park improvements.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, number one.
Excuse me. What did y'all just vote to do?
We're just out of, we're out of open session. We're going to close back up.
Public hearing, we close the public hearing.
Yeah, we one A, I'm sorry.
A resolution certifying legal authority to apply for the Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program from the Kansas Department of Commerce for Parks and Facilities.
Make a motion for a resolution certifying legal authority to apply for the Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program from the Kansas Department of Commerce for Parks and Facilities Systems Improvements.
Second. Okay, he's been moving second. Any other discussion on it?
Um, if we.
Um, if we decide to remove the splash pad, can we still go for the full 800,000?
I sincerely doubt that because the rest of the playground equipment is not going to cost with overhead $800,000.
Okay. Could we expand the playground equipment?
Pardon?
Could we expand the playground equipment?
Yes, uh, well, for one thing is if you change it now, we're going to have to republish and we hold another public hearing.
Okay.
Yes.
And what we've also found is when you've got a plan and you present it, if you've got the plan to how to spend the money, you got a lot better chance of getting it. And so we've got a plan to go.
It was my understanding from the architect and from the city that these items that are listed for the grant application were in the master plan. We're not creating the wheel. We're already expanding on what was already put in the master plan.
Good.
And we also are not, not going as big and beautiful, trying to size it to our budget that we can afford.
He might talk about Randy on the, the splash pad, it's going to be pretty economical. You know, because we're not going to have filters, nothing, it's just going to be a button they push and it goes for like 30 or 4 minutes and.
Yeah, so our estimated water cost for that for an entire season would be about $7,600. So, and it would be.
$7,600.
Versus the pool water cost is.
The cost of the, if, if the original design was a, was a filter system circulated and with the chemicals and all the, the, the city workers that were going to have to take care of that and stuff. It would have been extremely expensive to operate, let alone the, the expensive install it, which is probably.
Any other discussion, we got a motion, a second on the floor. Okay, it's a voice vote, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Those carries. One B.
A resolution assuring the Kansas Department of Commerce that funds will be continually provided for the maintenance of improvements for the parks and facility system to be financed with the community development block grant.
I'd like to, uh, follow up with a res, or a motion for a resolution assuring the Kansas Department of Commerce that the funds will be continually provided for the operation and maintenance of improvements to the parks and facility system to be financed with community development block, block grant funds.
Second. Okay, it's been moved a second, any other discussion on it? If not, it's a voice vote, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, uh, Public Service Department.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
A resolution.
Yes, thank you.
That they've submitted by Gades Sales Co. Incorporated to replace the current camera operating system at Summit and Skyline Room in amount of $26,690.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, this proposal is for a radar system. What we are proposing is to go with Gades versus the, uh, other one by Wave Tronics, which we have at CN Kansas now. Just wave, Mid-American Signal, CN Kansas is a good operating system. But the support tech comes from Kansas City. So we have to wait hours on ends for them to get here or schedule us. Cause they're busy with different towns and such. Um, we would like to try Gades system, they are in Wichita. This is a different system. We won't have to pull hardly any cable, if any at all. Depends if we have any breaks in the system that's there now. It's a plug and play, we'll hit the radar heads up, plug them into the old camera coaxions. Plug them straight to the new main boxes, in and out, hopefully in a day. The lights up there, the cameras up there at Skyline and Summit, deal with a lot of glare and a lot of repetitive truck traffic. So with the radar, we will have constant flow a lot better. We'll have to look out, we have the availability to put in the turn lanes that we already have, it'll change on any of that. Just the radar system will work faster, better, more efficient. We don't have to deal with glare, we don't have to deal with sun, we don't have to deal with snow, rain, or any of that fog, none of that bothers radar.
And that, that camera won't be used to track anybody's speed or anything, it's just traffic.
Radar.
It's a radar, we think, oh.
It's radar.
We're going to fund this project.
Jennifer, we got that budget.
I can make a motion that we approve a resolution, authorize the city of Work City, accept the bid submitted by Gades Sales Company E to replace the crank camera operating system at Summit and Skyline Road for an estimated amount of $26,690.
Second. Can, can somebody explain to me what the radar system does?
It operates the traffic light. It operates the traffic light.
By, by what, sees it traffic?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yes, it recognizes the flow of traffic and moves accordingly that way.
Okay.
So they don't have to wait.
It does something that camera systems don't do, it picks up motorcycles, it picks up bicyclists.
Which is very, I'm, I'm very appreciative when you're on radio lane in Kansas. For something I mean.
So much, yeah.
Okay, uh, you made the motion.
I made the motion.
Okay, okay, you said, I got confused. Okay, any other discussion on it?
One question, so with this, with this camera, and I know there's, I'm over, I know Tony, you're going to hate me for bringing this up. Okay, so it's a little bumpy there as you leave, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I was under the impression there was some kind of pressure pads there. Would we be able to go in there and just, since we're getting a new grinder too, grind those down with that light there?
We can grind down everything because it's.
There we go, okay.
Out of cam.
Okay.
There's no sensors in it.
Sensors here.
Okay, any other discussion? Josh, voice vote, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Those carries.
I got you.
Thanks, Tony.
Number one, under, misses.
So the city dinner department, item number one is a resolution to approve urban area boundary lines within our Kansas.
Josh, you want to give more background on that?
Sure.
Okay.
This is something that the Kansas Department of Transportation does every so often, I think it was 2015 was the last time that this was done. Basically, you're just defining the boundaries that our urban growth is, which outside of city limits, I don't know much. But it's a census thing, they come with this urbanized area. And within that, that's, it helps determine what our funding.
Do you know if there's any changes to this from what we did in 2015?
There's some minor changes, um, move a little bit, this east of Patterson Park, east of the railroad tracks. And there's a little, actual little area that I suggested they changed in the sway southeast that follows, uh, I think it's 91st Road that went in line with that instead of this, I don't even remember what it was. It was for exchange what they were using before. Like, it doesn't really affect the true boundaries, which is.
Hey. That's something we do every, every so often.
Something about 10.
I think it's about every 10 years, it has something to do with the census, we have the 2020 census and so they.
Okay. This is, this is just yellow tape we're going through.
But, Mayor, I move we approve a resolution to, on the urban area boundary lines within York City, Kansas.
Second. Okay, it's been moved a second, uh, any other discussion on it? If not, it's a voice vote, uh, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Those, motion carries. Number two.
A resolution to approve the urban functional classification of streets within our Kansas City, Kansas.
This is continuation of the same thing. In the city limits, every street has a designation, it's either local, or it's a collector, or it's an arterial. How that's designated, again, has to do with funding. For instance, we spoke of Summit Street a little bit earlier, just briefly. The reason we were able to get that CBG grant was because that's an arterial. The collectors also can get some federal funding as well, but it's kind of less than, and with the local street, probably not going to get, uh, the federal funds for them. We got you both.
What's considered a collector?
So collector, basically, so we have the local streets. And the collector is what gathers all the traffic from those local streets. And then the collector, exactly like it sounds, it collects all that traffic and takes it to the arterial. So what?
Kansas Avenue.
Kansas Avenue. Summit Street, so those are those arterials, collectors would be a chestnut.
Mm-hmm.
That being said, I move that we approve a resolution to approve the urban functional classification of streets within our Kansas City, Kansas.
Hey, it's been moved a second, any other discussion on it before we vote? If not, it's a voice vote, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Those, motion carries. Number three.
Here a presentation from professional engineering consultant, PBC, to provide input on 101 acre housing master.
Good evening, nice to see you again, Lance Onstock, professional engineering consultant, PBC. Uh, it's been a few months since I've been in front of you. So a lot of work has happened since the last time that we spoke. You my slide advancer. The slideshow that.
I didn't even see this slide.
Is it already in the pocket?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh.
Perfect. So we'll get through this together. We'll start to feel each other out. Those real long awkward pauses, we'll figure it out. So, uh, tonight, we're going to present to you guys the, the concept land use plan that we ultimately developed. So I'll kind of give you a little bit of overview of the process up to this point. And then we'll kind of go through, we'll stop, we'll, uh, but our objective, we'll stop throughout at different points. But our obje, objective tonight is to present that to you all and, uh, uh, get input, your feedback into what it is that we've developed, uh, working closely with city staff. Uh, but also doing some engagement with your community. So there was kind of three phases to this project. The first phase that we always go through is what we call a site discovery phase. So this is where we're learning as much as we can, not only about the piece of property that, uh, we're looking at, but also just generally what's happening in the city. Uh, so we'll talk about that briefly, then we'll review the concept land use plan. Uh, then the third phase was a public engagement phase to where we, uh, all explain those details in the feedback. And you probably saw it here in, in your agenda packets leading up to this. So I'll try to get through the site discovery phase a little bit, uh, briefly. Uh, cause we didn't find anything super alarming that would really dictate how we draw a proposed or conceptual development. So as you can, like, currently served with utilities, a sufficient amount of utilities really for any type of development that you want to put on the site. From gas service, from your franchise utilities and from your public infrastructure, uh, all there already. No offsite extensions needed, no offsite improvements or upsizing needed to do whatever it is that you guys want to do with a piece of property. So for us, that means we're kind of blank slate, right? Uh, we can kind of, uh, draw whatever we want to draw based on input that we hear. A little bit of encumbrance on the property from, uh, kind of a natural features perspective, the purple that you see there are floodways and flood plains. So it's off to the west of our site. Uh, we've had some conversations about that very, uh, extreme southwest corner of the property that we get into survey as you get into developing this, that we'll want to pay close attention to. But again, nothing super alarming that's going to really dictate the way that, uh, the property develops. We've looked at, and we'll talk a little bit more about this on the next slide, because I know it's a, it's an issue that has continuously came up. But we have looked at Skyline, 8th and 15th, so the arterial streets that are, that are surrounding it. Both from a, a traffic perspective, from a volume perspective currently, which is what we'll talk about here. Uh, but also just in terms of how wide the right of ways are currently and the standard in which that they're improved currently to make sure that we're at least understanding implications on these roadways with added development. So the, what you're looking at here is, uh, Kansas Department of Transportation data from, I think it's 2002. So along 8th Street, uh, the annual average daily trips or the amount of vehicles that are using 8th Street at that specific location is approximately 1,800 vehicles.
You think that might be outdated 2002, I mean, because, you know, I mean.
I think there's probably more traffic now than what it was 2002, but I'm just, you know.
To a scale, sure, I, I'm sure, but what is that scale, what is that difference? And we had some conversation about that, discussing these. Is it 2,000, is it 2,100, maybe? Uh, but as we start to kind of talk about implications on the development of this, we'll start to understand like the difference of 500, even if you doubled it, it's probably not going to change our recommendation. So, yeah, it's probably not 1,800.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's along 8th Street, um, along Skyline, at least to the west, we're at 755 and 15th, we're at 650, or 655, yeah. I said that right, 655. So we'll talk about, this is kind of our baseline. Um, as we get into the concept land uses and we start talking about what we're proposing or recommending that is done with this piece of property. This is what we'll use to kind of assess potential traffic implications of what we've drawn. So this is going to, again, just an existing condition, just that baseline. So we've looked at, again, whenever you're doing land juices, you want to do it in a context sensitive manner, is what we call that. So we've looked surrounding the site at what the adjacent zoning is, uh, to make sure that we're taking that into consideration when we're proposing land juices. So our site currently is zone R1 low, low density residential. To the north, we've got kind of a, a mixture of county zoning, those areas that aren't in your city limits with R3 high density and your housing opportunity overlay, which are those two developed portions in the northeast portion, north, adjacent to our site, northeast. Through the east, we're primarily R1 low density, to the south, R2 medium density. And there is some public use zoning there. And then to the west, again, there's some areas that aren't in the city limits, so it's county zoning. And then those that are, are R1 low density residential. So again, when we start talking about land juices, this is another one of those inputs as we're starting to kind of allocate different things in different places. So in addition to looking at the physical existing conditions of that property and surrounding it, we've also looked into your guys' existing studies and plans, the things that should be, you know, should represent some level of consensus throughout the community that should be kind of informing the decisions we make from a public perspective. So I'll read these, uh, briefly. But according to your guys' comprehensive plan, uh, there are goals in that comprehensive plan. One of those is to support the development of a wide variety of housing neighborhood types, ranging from traditional and historic neighborhoods to modern subdivisions. Supporting the availability of housing for all ages and income groups. To the same, the city should include a variety of neighborhoods consisting of single family site-built homes, manufactured housing, townhouses, and multifamily housing structures. Further, the comprehensive plan about supporting neighborhoods with walkable destinations. And supporting a density and supporting generally density in a mix of land juices that promote active transportation by bringing destinations closer together. All of that to me summarized is what we're trying to, what we're trying to do is we're trying to create complete neighborhoods, not isolated subdivisions. So that's kind of, you know, our charge when we're putting together a plan for 101 acres, which is a large property, right? For, and you'll see how many dwelling units this, uh, this can support, even at a kind of moderate density. But we're trying to figure out how a bunch of pieces can be arranged in a way that makes sense and is sensitive to everything that's going around it, that is existing around it. But has multiple options contained within. So further, we looked at the city's housing assessment tool where it specifies needs for low and moderate income, single families, senior housing, apartments. So these things together, the existing conditions, uh, and kind of our review of your guys' studies, policies, plans are kind of the foundation of which we start to draw then at that point, which I think, I'm hoping, the next slide is that. So what we'll do is we'll kind of walk through the concept land use. Before I show you the map, I did include visualizations or some pictures so you guys, when we get to the map, it's pretty broad. So you can kind of get an idea of what it is that we're proposing. We'll show the map, um, and then we can probably pause and get some questions or thoughts. But then that next portion of that will be what we've heard when we've presented this to the community. So on that concept land use map, you'll see portions. So on that concept land use map, you'll see portions of that property that we've reserved for open space, park, amenity. It could be general open space. It could be kind of a traditional park structure. Or it could be more structural and facility-based childcare centers, whatever it could be, you know, whatever you want it to be. But we want to make sure on 101 acres, you're reserving some for non-private development, I would say. You'll also see on this concept land use map, we've, based on the analysis we've done preliminarily from a drainage perspective, there is a drainage way that runs through there. Instead of it making it just a ditch, those are really good community assets generally from a linear greenway. It could just be, these are from all over kind of Wichita, Kansas area, open space with a walking trail that connects. So I'll explain a little bit more geographically where that falls and kind of some of the advantages to that. But this is kind of what we're thinking when you see this on the map that we'll talk about in a minute. So now we'll get into the housing types. So the first housing type we're calling single family traditional. This is what everyone thinks of generally when they think of modern subdivisions of single family homes. So garage dominated on the bottom two, doesn't necessarily have to be, as you see in the top left. But for each of these housing types, we've kind of put kind of an expected dwelling unit per acre, not to get super technical on you, but that's lot size, right? That's what that boils down to. So this is very traditional fifth of an acre, quarter of an acre, single family homes. Generally 2,000 square feet. Again, that's somewhat arbitrary, can be more, it could even be less. So you'll see some areas reserved for single family, traditional single family. And then further, this is probably somewhat of the one that we get the most questions about. But that next housing type on that next slide is single family still. So these are detached structures, but they're alley loaded. We all know historic neighborhoods that are built in this way. But this is a very, very popular way to build single family homes in Kansas right now. I don't think you guys have experienced any new development in this, but it's everywhere, you know, 60 miles north of you. So part of what we're doing is not only finding what's appropriate for this particular site, but what's also appropriate from a market perspective. So I think we all want something to actually be built here, right? So that's another input into what we're doing. Essentially, what this allows you to do is kind of tuck your houses a little closer to the street, front porch, you know, style living, where not so garage dominated, vehicle dominated. So it's a very, very popular product. It also allows for some financial gain from that. Like you can build these in a way that makes them attainable from a, from a home sales perspective. So we've got a couple of different models here. You'll see on the bottom left where all of these front yard don't front onto a public street. They actually, like you walk out your front door and you're in a public park or a neighborhood park, I should say. Some of them are directly onto the street, but all of them are alley loaded with your garages. The bottom right picture is a neighborhood in, on the west side of Wichita. You'll see you're actually looking at the rear of these. So what you see on the left is actually a garage with an apartment on top of it. So again, these are what are commonly called accessory dwelling units technically or backyard cottages. Another very powerful home affordability tool. So, you know, I've got a 13-year-old, let's say she doesn't go to college, but she doesn't want to live with me and she can live above the garage in the back. Something happens at work, right? You know, and I need extra income, I'll rent out that unit. All kinds of different things you can do with those. So that's a, these are all from, so the top left is in Andover, Kansas, bottom right's in Wichita. The others are in the Wichita area. So again, these are products that are being built in our region now.
What does alley loaded mean?
So that means that I can show you kind of at the end, not quite yet, we'll see. But it's, so you have a public street in the front of your house and then you have an alley in the back. So instead of driving on the public street, pulling in your driveway to the garage, there is no access to a garage from your street in the front of your house. We take the alley and access your garage from the back. So we have allocated some space to townhomes using your guys' zoning regulations kind of definition. Or any of these are attached structures between two and I believe six, if I remember correctly, your guys' zoning code. So they could be two, two-family attached, all the way up to four-family attached, duplex, triplex, quadplex, however you want to, whatever term you want to use. But these are attached structures to offer, again, another, another product for a different type of market. And then the last housing type we show on here are what we're calling garden apartments. These aren't three to four, five-story, you know, big buildings. These are, you know, maybe, you know, generally two stories, sometimes one, not as often three, but definitely nothing bigger than that, smaller buildings, smaller unit counts, arranged around kind of a courtyard setting or a kind of a garden setting. So that way it's not just a sea of multifamily housing. It's kind of a design specific thing, but we did allocate some space for that. So now putting all of those pieces together, this is the land use plan. So I'm going to say very generally, what we've done with this, we've kind of matched the housing types that you see south of this property. So all of that is primarily seen, that is developed as single family, what I consider traditional single family. So everything on the south in yellow is some sort of product of single family. As we go towards the north, again, we have different housing types that are existing now. So we increase that density slightly as we go from south to north to match what it is that we have surrounding the site. So being sensitive to what's being currently developed. So we can play with what's single family traditional, what's single family alley loaded. But we've got to put the alley loaded products at that southeast corner and the traditional kind of further center and over to the west. As you go up, to kind of buffer those land juices from the single family to the townhomes and ultimately the apartment product at the north, we have put some space there that you can see in kind of the green and the purple to provide that buffer of kind of some open space. That's where we would propose you guys put some sort of neighborhood park or developers put some sort of neighborhood park. But that's to kind of buffer those different land juices. We've also drawn, drawn in some preliminary streets. Streets also act as a natural way to buffer different land juices. So that's, you'll see kind of the difference in land juices are arranged around the streets. And then you can't see it on this drawing, but the apartments that you see up in the top, we have drawn some contours in, on the west side of those to provide some buffering based on that product to what's over on the west. So I'll pause after this slide. But each one of those housing types, we've generated kind of a, an estimated dwelling unit per acre or density that you could build it, how much acreage we devoted to that land use. And we've came up with what we, kind of a range that you guys can start to think about. At full buildout, how many houses, how many dwelling units is this? It'll be somewhere between 277 and 506, depending on the density of what's actually built. But if I take that range for single family traditional, somewhere between two and five dwelling units per acre, that's the range. So single family traditional, if it's two per dwelling, you know, if it's two dwelling units per acre, that's going to be 32, 32 single family homes. If they're a little bit tighter, then it could push to 80. So this will factor in to when we talk a little bit about traffic impacts on the next slide. But I think I'll pause because I've talked a lot and I want to make sure that you guys have an opportunity to ask any questions or clarification before we get into traffic impact.
On the alley homes, you'd park in the back. But for guest parking, there's to be out on the street, correct? I mean, streets can be wide enough for both sides to be filled with.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. So you design the street to account for on-street parking for guests or more than two cars, whatever it is.
Can we ask questions?
Sure.
I'm from Kearl Lane. And we have problems with water, water spillway. There wasn't a waterway built. And so the land north of this is higher ground than what we are. And so all their backfill comes downhill and we're all. And so we have to watch, we wash our clothes and things so that we don't have sewer backup. So in this proposal, are they going to? We don't have a problem.
Yes.
Also too, the children who, they don't know housing in this north of us. And they have the, the parents or whoever have the tendency to cross through our property to go to the church to play on the playground, okay? Are all of those, the people in those housing, are they going to have an area for their dogs and stuff so they don't come through our yard, crap in the yard, stuff or use this church's property? Are we going to have that all enclosed?
One of the, one of the things that they were specifically asked you guys to do is not connect it to the housing project south of them, correct? Of course, I've heard that. Okay. So I think that answered your question. It's not going to be connected, they'll still have that barrier there.
Okay. And now, the Spanish population and opportunity. And I imagine that probably is going to increase as they expand. Most of my friends, they want houses. They want houses property because they have dogs. They don't want a whole lot of, they don't want apartments. They want their own housing. They don't want to pay $570 to $650 a month rent. They want to buy a house. So are there going to be enough housing but? Not crammed in areas? And then two, is it going to raise my property taxes? I went, I bought my house in 1983. My property taxes back then were $618. Now I am spending, I haven't got this year's debt, but last year's was $2,700. That's how much it has gone up just because I built new houses north of me and the next block over. So is that going to make my property taxes go up to 3,000 to 3,500? I have a small pension and I live on Southern Dairy. So keep that in mind when you build all these houses, what it's doing to us. You guys used to have the property, what is it, Parker City, Parkerville, wherever you want to call it, where you could have expanded that way, but you chose not to. You gave up the property and let them have their own area. Now you want to go north where we are and it's up to our property taxes and things. Keep that in mind when you do this.
Yeah, I think I can address, so the drainage concern, yes. When this is developed, generally the drainage in the entire area will improve. Right now drainage is just taking its natural course, right? So when we get in and actually go through the subdivision process, actually, you know, go about do the field surveys and put in streets and put in retention and detention ponds, all the things we do as engineers and architects and planners, generally drainage is improved with development. We have the, we have the responsibility to prove to the city, working on behalf of developments, that what we're doing, taking a green field, right? That's absorbing a lot of clean water or runoff or whatever, whatever it is. We have to prove scientifically what we're doing, replacing all of that with driveways and rooftops and streets and all that pavement, stuff that doesn't absorb, isn't impacting anyone else downstream. That's just a requirement of state law. So drainage actually gets improved generally with development. Pedestrian access, if we're doing our job as designers, they shouldn't have to walk through anyone's property to get to wherever they want to go. So that's up to us, again, engineers and planners and all the things that we do ourselves. Do your job, that shouldn't.
I see that some people have some hard copies of what you're showing here. Can I get a copy of our copy?
Yeah.
I think I want to copy.
Yeah, I would like to.
And I'd just like to point out the advantage, you know, company like P E C. Because it answers both your questions there is that, that housing development that was, was built to the south, it didn't have somebody coming to this. They just had a developer come in and say, I'm going to put some land, I'm going to put some houses down. And I know the guy, I like the guy, but that's why you're having your drainage issues is because you didn't have a, you didn't have someone like P E C come in and say, hey, here's the lay of the land. Here's what needs to be done. So that's why they're having those issues that you're talking about with that drainage. I believe the city made the right choice by choosing these guys so that we can address all those issues. It may cost a little more money, but you're not going to have to worry about your basins flooding later. You're not going to have to worry about, well, the developer's got a one-lane road and it's not working. Where these guys are saying, hey, this is the type of road you're going to have. So I think going with, with someone that's, that's done this before and developed before is going to make a big difference.
Is the city going to do something with Eighth Street itself because all those kids walk to school?
I, I understand exactly what you're saying. And all we got is, it's, it's a, it's a, or it's a asphalt road with ditches on both sides.
Right. And then when that field was industrial park or whatever you want to call it.
Sure.
AC energy owned it, all that water would go into the street and that's what's brewing in Eighth Street right here. We had a couple of them. Tell them that the water is draining into the street and it's draining the street because it's knocking a hole underneath the ground. Paying that rounder way.
I lived on, I mean, it was a dirty, aggressive, ended, you know, man.
Did we do what? I'm sorry.
I think you guys addressed what she's talking about down the road, I mean, for the.
This plan?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I mean, we definitely know what needs to happen to Eighth.
And we do get three buses right now that stop, make a stop here on Eighth Street.
Yeah.
Those three buses and that will make it even more bus. I think I want to call it a school too. If people who live in those apartments, they have this tendency to not stop at the corner of Skyline Road and Eighth Street. They yield, they really don't stop.
Can't do anything about bad drivers. I understand what you're saying though, yes.
More traffic.
Sure.
Yeah. More traffic, so if there's any way to.
Yeah, that's actually, the, the next slide that we'll talk about is, we provided, yeah, it's great. Like we can draw stuff and all these different houses and, you know. But that's one reason why we spent so much time looking at existing traffic counts is we start to actually act, at least from a very high level, planning level, on what, when this is built, if it's built the way that we've said or laid out, what you can expect from a traffic volume perspective. So I mentioned it at the, you know, the first time I was with you guys. We, we kind of use the general rule of 10 vehicle trips per day per dwelling unit. It's somewhat of an arbitrary number, as you guys can imagine, right? Like some houses will use two, some houses will have 30, depending on how many people live there, right? But it gives you a kind of an idea of scale. So let's assume, using the dwelling unit counts that we talked about on the previous slide, that each one of those generates 10 vehicle trips. We'll add between 2,700 and 5,000 trips on these roadways per day on average. Now the disclaimer I want to, I have no idea if that's going to be, you know, 3,000 on Eighth Street and 2,000 on Skyline and 1,000 or whatever on Fifteenth. I have no idea how they're going to distribute themselves. So that's the disclaimer that I want to make. Don't think that because I put on here 5,000 additional trips, they're all going to be on Eighth Street. I don't have the information to tell you guys that with any sort of a security. So again, it's a thought exercise, a scaling exercise. So as planners and engineers, we typically have an idea of what type of roadway can handle a certain amount of traffic volume. That's what those numbers are on the bottom right. So a two-lane road with no real improvements at all is typically 1,000 is where you're looking. Now, like that's generally where you're at. Now improving it to, let's say, have a center turn lane or a left turn lane, you don't really start to hit that need until almost 18,000 trips on that particular segment of. Another disclaimer, so I'm full of disclaimers on this slide. What is actually generating that traffic matters. So if it's concentrated at a school, for example, or if it's concentrated at a major shopping center and there's really high, you know, excessive vehicles at eight, between eight, nine in the morning and five and six P M. Like, yeah, maybe then you might need a traffic signal or a turn lane. So again, this is planning level. Nothing that I have, in all of the years that I've been doing this on this particular property, from a volume perspective, if it develops the way that we've put here, from a purely volume perspective, widening of the street, adding turn lanes, adding stop, you know, traffic signals or stop signs or right. widening of the street, adding turn lanes, adding stop, you know, traffic signals or stop signs or right turn lanes, center turn lanes, there's nothing in here that would generate, uh, uh, a recommendation from us to do that. Now, when you actually get development proposals and somebody wants to put in a really high volume something, then that might change, and that's the disclaimer. But purely from a concept perspective, uh, based on these land uses and counts, there's no need to improve it from a traffic perspect, operations perspective. Now, that being said about Eighth Street, there is a very real issue with some drainage in Eighth Street with the old ditch sections, and a very real issue with lack of sidewalks getting from these homes to the schools and whatever else is south, or even from the south up north. Um, that is the improvement that at some point the city will want to consider, is taking that from, uh, what we would call an interim improved arterial, so two lanes of pavement with ditch drainage to, uh, again, not to use a charged word, uh, but an urban, full urban improvement, which is two travel lanes with curb and gutter. So these are the types of things that, you know, as you're preparing for growth, these are the types of things that you generally would wanna have estimates for and uh, posture yourself for grant applications and include in your capital improvement program, uh, to prepare for that type of growth.
There's a question, Doc, you're right.
I do.
Yeah.
Uh, I live off of Fifteenth Street and I can tell you, because the city and the county can't decide whose responsibility is from the speed limit sign, which is just west of the apartments, over to Fifteenth Street, that is a disaster and it cannot handle that kind of housing development. And you'll know what part I're talking about.
Oh, I know exactly where you're talking about, I know that you're right, the county and the city argue about it all the time.
And it's, and I drive, that traffic on there, I mean, that housing, and I tell you, that, we need, we need single home housing. Those apart, those alley apartments, I think that just cheapens it and makes the housing development look cheap, I'm sorry. We're not Wichita, Kansas. Amen. We're not Wichita. We're not there yet, and I feel bad for the Nessas that live right on that, uh, the north, right on that.
Fifteenth and, and.
Yes.
Ready to Skyline, probably.
Yes. Nessas and the home that was just built across the street that owns Pizza Ranch.
Jellings.
Yes. That's not why, they didn't buy those, buy that property out there and have a bunch of apartments by it, I'm sorry. And that has its bad drainage problems too, but if that's not addressed before you even start the housing development, you are shot in the foot.
There were apartments already to the north or to the, to the northwest.
Yes.
Cars were there already.
They're there now.
Right, and, and then there was just some, there was just some new townhouses that were built there as well, so they knew what they were getting in when they built that house there.
Well, Nessas, they were.
Did not, okay, fair enough.
And he bought, and he bought that as a retirement home.
But Jellings knew exactly what he was getting into when he bought that.
How many roads are you talking about, entrances are you talking about off of Fifth, off the side of, end of this housing development to the south?
Uh, I think based on just one. Off of Fifteen.
No, I mean on, uh, no, Skyline.
Or off Skyline, I'm sorry. That's right. Yeah, just based on off of Skyline there at the north, you're probably gonna get one.
And are the one, though, I can't tell by the map, the north and south, which is the north and south?
North and south.
Which is north?
North is at the top.
North is always at the top. Okay, uh, why are we? Didn't make a difference, you put, the city's already made up their mind. Why, why are you putting all the little, the, why are you not putting any bigger houses, uh, off of the Skyline?
He's, he's presenting this to us, and he, and he explained earlier that you've already got the, you've already got the townhouses there, uh, and the apartments there, and so automatically you put the garden apartments with the apartments and then you move it where the other houses south of you are, are, uh, are family housing. So you, you're moving from apartment areas and then they kinda meet in it when you got your houses there and they, so it kinda flows together.
And the city is trying not to put all those, uh, to make more single family homes?
This is a, he's just presenting this, this is, this is just what they found. We are not gonna vote to do this tonight. I know what you're talking about, yes ma'am.
Yeah, no, any developer that buys this and wants to develop it is gonna understand that there's gonna need to be improvements to Skyline, Eighth, and Fifteen.
And who pays for the improvement on that, on Skyline?
So typically, I'll tell, like, it depends, I'll, I'll speak generally about. But generally what we see with arterial improvements is it depends on what state it's in current. So if it's a gravel street or a, like, chip seal street, just have a nasty, or, you know, rural street that hasn't been proved, uh, a lot of times the developer has a, a portion of that cost. So conversely, on Eighth Street, so that is what we would consider an interim arterial improvement, most communities would, um, where it's paved and two lane. So upgrading that to, uh, urban section, as I started about earlier, with curb and gutter drainage, um, is typically a city cost. Because when, like, as Josh was talking about the function of arterials, collectors, locals, anything that you see within this development is generally a hundred percent paid by a developer, homeowner, through a special assessment, whatever, because they're the ones benefiting, they're local streets. Collectors function to funnel all of the local street traffic to arterials, so that's typically shared between those benefiting, the development and the city at large. Arterials generally are serving more than just one particular developer.
It's a hundred acres and is that county property or is it, is it man and ex of the city?
City.
It's city.
So that's generally the way most cities finance arterial or how they share that, but every development is different. Every development is, has its own set of considerations, open for negotiation with developers, like it's, that's general policy, but actual application is.
So, so from what he just said, just to put it out there, real, with everybody, Fifteenth Street would probably be added with the developers, it'd be a cost shared, and then Eighth Street and Fifteenth would be probably city. Because there are already, because there are already two lanes.
Yeah, but that's Skyline.
Skyline would be, would be a developer, city, uh, because it's, it's that chip seal crappy road that we're talking about.
And there's all kinds of ways, like even on Eighth Street.
Sure.
You know, to where you're funneling, you know, just additional revenue created by the development to pay for that. There are mechanisms at the city level to where you can do that, to where, you know, someone on the south side of town's property taxes isn't paying for, to improve that. So those are all really nuanced and specific on each development, but those are things that we deal with on, you know, every project we work.
Well, the other thing, city can apply for grants.
I was gonna ask for the grants available.
Yeah.
But that's the arterial. Isn't Skyline Road, isn't half of it owned by the county and then a half by the city? That's what we're talking about, but.
And there, it's a pretty gray, and it's unfortunate, it's gray area, you probably need to get the county.
Ask for the city to fix some chuck holes that are on the corner of Fifteen and Skyline Road. And it has yet to be done because their argument is, is that half the road belongs to the county and the other half belongs to.
Well, I could tell you this, three years ago I worked for the city, and I, and I was told this three different times. You guys fixed that Fifteenth Street, and I'll throw on the county under the bus right now if they're listening. But they were told, we were told three different times, if you fix that road and, and chip seal it and get it all fixed up, then the county will take over, and they've yet to do it, so. County, what are you doing? So we need to probably get an agreement there somehow, get that worked.
They maintain Fifteenth that goes on north. The county does, with the speed limit sign and going north, it's a good show.
Well, that's technically not city limits, that road is a divider, that's what the problem is.
Yeah, that, Skyline is.
Sure. No, I'm only, go ahead and let him continue, I apologize.
No, you're fine, because I, I think it's all a pretty good segue into that third phase of what we, it was kinda, what we heard when we presented this to the public. Uh, so I'll read these and then there's, uh, some additional things. So the things that we heard, we, we took this concept, land use plan, all the, you know, site discovery stuff, we planted, we presented it to your planning commission and had a conversation there. So at that planning commission, uh, meeting, what I heard was, uh, that these improvements to the adjacent streets, Eighth, Skyline, Fifteenth are important. Uh, also communicated to us, not only from just like a travel perspective of these roads, but also drainage, things we've discussed already, right? Um, they generally agreed, this, and there were members from the public that spoke at this too, uh, but the balance of these land uses. So to the single family, you know, comment, I think we're seventy-five percent of this land ju, of this, this plan is single family product. Um, so there was general agreeance with, uh, with the land uses that are on the plan. Um, they definitely reiterated and appreciated kind of our respect where we could, which is pretty much everywhere on the plan, respect of what's happening directly adjacent from a land use perspective. And there was some conversation about, you add all these dwelling units and all these people, what's gonna happen, you know, with our schools. Definitely a valid concern we hear, uh, quite often. And then specifically the need for sidewalk improvements on Eighth, Skyland, Skyline, and ultimately Fifteenth. Um, with the expectation and understanding that as this property develops, you will develop this infrastructure in phases. So that was what we heard from the planning commission. So that next slide, I believe, should be the public open house that we had. So, uh, the public open house on July twenty-third, we had twenty-eight attendees. Uh, we mailed out postcards, I think, to, to every, every homeowner within two hundred feet of this property, uh, and all the kinda standard city communication, uh, um, mediums. So we had twenty-eight attendees, just to kinda, before I give you, uh, kinda, the, the results that we, uh, we did collect a little bit of demographic information on attendees just to offer you guys, uh, kind of an idea to put in context what you were hearing. So average attendee was fifty-four, between the ages of fifty-four and sixty-four. Average attendee had, uh, a hundred thousand dollars or more a year in annual income, a family size of two, and lives directly adjacent to this. So we weren't getting people from the south side of town, we weren't getting largely, uh, young families with kids, like, again, just to provide you some context for what we heard. So the next slide, um, I think is going to show us one of the boards that we had. So we took off all of our land use designations, just gave them the map and gave them dots and said, if you were designing this piece of property, how would you align, how would you allocate these land uses? Um, so you can see very heavy, uh, on the southern side of single family, both of the traditional and there are some alley loaded in there. Townhomes generally in the middle, and then we have an apartment, uh, someone decided to be brave and put the apartment up north. So follows very, you know, uh, similarly to the way we laid it out. So this was produced by attendees at the public house. In addition to that, there were a number of other things that we did at that public house, but just kinda pulling some of that information. We heard family homes should be the number one priority, again, seventy-five percent of these dwelling units are single family. Concerns about increased traffic, concerns about low income housing, which we can talk about. Uh, protect the trees on the north side of Forest Glen, uh, sidewalks and roadway improvements to Eighth and don't connect Forest Glen. So, uh, all things that we can easily accomplish through this. So, uh, nothing overly concerning or unexpected, did we hear from the planning commission, those members of the public that spoke at the planning commission or the public open house. So I'll stop there, that's all the prepared information I have, but we can definitely have discussion or answer any questions that you guys have.
That was a good thorough presentation.
Yeah.
It was.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make that note right now.
Must be very good. And you talked slow and I understood what you're saying, you didn't talk like a architect.
I appreciate that. Well, I can say, like, you know, yes, we, P E C had a number of people working on this, but a number of your city staff worked on this with us hand in hand, so uh, we wouldn't have been able to get to that point, uh, without the public for one, and definitely the city staff that helped us.
Got a question back.
Steve?
Yeah, sorta coming, not really to that, young man there. In tonight's paper, I read about this little project that you're discussing here, the last paragraph, and I write, I've said that the city bought a hundred and one acres, paid forty-five hundred, perfect, for a total of seven fifty. I can't get my math to work out to that, but it's misprinted, what?
Yeah, that's a misprint, that's.
Well, I mean, that's, that's three hundred thousand.
Yeah, city didn't write that, so.
Pardon me?
City didn't write that article, so.
Well, whoever did.
Yeah. Yeah.
Was it five hundred thousand was paid for that?
Yeah, what?
I thought it was a five, over five hundred thousand, though. And then the developer could give to buy it for a dollar an acre?
No, it's not what it would've been said.
Okay.
Yeah.
They're gonna pay the thousand dollars an acre, five thousand?
Well, they're gonna, they're, they're gonna have to put in roads and all other kinds of stuff as well, so we gotta take that into consideration. I mean, if, if they do it, we don't have to, so they're gonna get some kind of benefit if they're gonna be able to do that.
Second part is the thing, I just kinda wanna throw around a little idea, you know? Eighth Street is a heavy travel road, has been for twenty years since you lived on it.
And it was a dirt road then.
And now we're doing, and, and your little project, I went out there to Nazarene Church, went around, looked at that, nice looking deal, nice presentation. So, you know, I'm not really wanting to crawl along your little housing development thing here, it, it needs done, but for crying out loud, man, that Eighth Street has fed industries. What the hell is the matter with you people that you will build all that out there? No place for people to walk in a three foot ditch right there, cut your tire on. And then after it gets there, now this man's telling me how you can, you can get this designed where only those people are gonna pay for that curb building. I'd like to see you one time, do something where you lay a nice road, curb and gutter and go out there and then start developing and building.
I, I can't end of that. We paid for that road, us people who live off of Eighth Street. Aren't, we paid for that road, the city did not pay for that road. You can look it up, you can see for yourself, we paid for that road. On assessments.
Where it's to get paid.
Or it's to get paid. The city couldn't do it, so we did.
You know what I'm getting at?
Right. I, I know, and, and, and.
Cause I smoke on a beach.
I, I understand you being upset, but I was twenty years old when that happened, so I, I didn't have any part of that, I don't, I mean.
When you're twenty years old.
Been done to that road since then. It wasn't run properly because, like I said, it was our money, we could do so much.
And I can under, I can understand the concern and, and like I said, we're, with this coming, then there's, there's some things we're gonna have to do and, and like I said, apply for grants, we're gonna do it.
They condemned Tom Meyer's property because they were gonna assess so much money on him because it was done per acre of how much we were charged to fix that road. He lost his property and he ended up having a heart attack after that because it hurt him so much. He wanted to have an evergreen farm.
He drove a car from you guys, correct?
Yeah.
To the west, or the east, yeah.
And now all those trees are just overhanging because no one takes care of them. People bought that property, which no one was posted by the property, because then it creates more water back to us.
And, I don't. Forty acres, we got about fifty acres, we got fifty acres fresh out here. On your little, it's twenty-one here, twenty-one there.
It's a hundred.
Property is a hundred. And that's it, the whole hundred acres, so, so fifty acres worth of housing, fifty acres worth of street.
So we typically use, uh, uh, seventy percent, so if you have a hundred acres, right, we'll typically say you can develop about seventy after you account for public street right of way, uh, utility easements, drainage areas, so actually a private lots, yes. Yeah. And that, that, that fluctuates, right, you know, but it's generally between seventy and eighty percent.
And it looked like fifty acres worth of. And I don't trust you.
Your slide showed, showed only twenty-one point four acres for the single family home for about two thousand square feet, which was thirty-two to eighty-hundred, but you allotted twenty-one point six for the alley loaded. Yeah, are you stuck on that twenty-one point six or can, or single family homes in, in that area?
Sure. No, that's just my, that's our recommendation based on a number of factors, okay, we've talked about some of them.
Try buying a house in our Kansas City?
Yeah.
A single family home?
No, I have not, and that's why it's like, you know, you guys are the, like, we're presenting you guys the recommendations, but it can be split, and I will say, part of that also is who's gonna be willing to invest eight million dollars to do this project? is who's gonna be willing to invest eight million dollars to do this project on the private side. They're gonna wanna build generally what they think the market demands, right?
So we're all gonna have all apartments.
I don't think that's probably, like, even in Wichita, we're not building all apartments. I mean, we're still predominantly building single family homes. So that just won't probably work from a private investment perspective. So that that's always a delicate balance between what a city wants, what a what the population wants, and what a developer wants. So this is a starting point.
No, you said you were done. I heard you.
I know, I just got the alley way. Our street, like I said, is a rain. And the dump trucks have to back up our road because there is no turnaround. So are the alleyways gonna be wide enough so that the trucks can have a turnaround, so they can turn around, so they don't have to back into it? Because that's a lot of experience. They share up our roads back and up.
Is he talking about trash trucks?
Yes.
We're not gonna have a trash truck, we'll put it all in front like we do now.
So emergency response, fire trucks, trash trucks, all of that generally will still be fit from the front of the house. Or in those cities, we have done it developments where we've allowed for that. But yes, like, we as engineers and planners and architects, we have tools, you know, like, you know, software where we can virtually make sure these things can make those turn movements. But generally, it's still public street.
And they will develop the alleyways on the builder, will do the alleyways for it? Is that, or does the city have to maintain the alleyways, like, that are not maintained?
It'll be just like it is in town. We don't, the city does not maintain them now.
No, never.
No. We, there might be one or two, but I mean, I know of a couple that they've got some grading, some grading things they'll do or stuff. But for the most part, the city does not touch the alleys. Yes, ma'am.
So we see it as most common on new ones. For one, we build them out of concrete, not asphalt, for, they last a lot longer, right?
Alleyways.
We design alleys in concrete. And then we typically, through the development process with a subdivision plan, will will have, there'll be a declaration of covenants, you know, a legal document that's recorded with Rick Meyer's private maintenance. And if each away fails to maintain, then the city has the right to maintain. But that's the way it's handled nowadays. So snow removal, for example, is typically the responsibility of a homeowners association.
Okay, this is, this is just kind of open to the public tonight. We're not voting on nothing. We just wanted to present it to the public, get information. I thank you guys for giving us, you know, good thought stuff to come back, so.
And I just wanted to go up there. I know you guys can see where, when I get online, I'm awful upset, people complaining when they haven't been to a meeting. So I want to thank you for showing up to this meeting and complain away, and I'll just let you do it. Not you, Steve. But no, thank you for coming to these meetings. It's, it does help a lot.
Yeah, input does. I don't have any more questions. Does anybody up here have any questions?
I agree with you. You did a great, great job.
Thank you. We appreciate it. So we'll, anything we can do to like, to help you guys, let us know.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Josh, where do we go from here?
Well, the next step basically would be to bring people in that would actually do this.
Okay.
Obviously, we need to look at, we need to look at the streets, and we need to look at the infrastructure.
We're waiting on the city manager to come back. He had to be a potty break.
We're using, I'll go two hours on these.
It's a meeting.
Every Tuesday, or I'm sorry, every first and third Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yes, ma'am.
That's right.
Yes, ma'am. Tell them every Tuesday when they miss the first one, that we are.
I'll be out in a minute and wear it.
Oh, appreciate it.
Okay, number four.
A resolution adopting by reference to the twenty twenty-four comprehensive fee schedule air. So there were a few amendments that we made to this. It's more pregnant to you. So if I had even asked, wanted to add a twenty-dollar report fee, currently, when someone asks for records or requests on an accident, for example, they may only have to go in and spend time to hold that information for this, accommodate for those calls. Minnesota Board just had a few minor little changes. You'll see if you're on the, I listed out all the changes that we made. So their amendments were basically under the S T O violations. And both of those indicated that you did not have to appear, but you actually do. And they were to be on striking an intended vehicle and international interlocked devices. And parks and facilities rentals, the Agro Culture Building, we have been running out the north and south building with the kitchen. It just wasn't listed in here, the rental fee. So we added that. And then we updated the wording under the senior citizen rental to clarify that was a damaged deposit that we were collecting in front of the deposit. And under parks and facilities, special events, we updated police security wording to add other special events. So police security is not just for the agribusiness building, asset spending, a couple different pages in here. They also are present as the sporting of the schools. And they do, they get requests for other private events, special events, city hosts, our call, of course. So those are in there. And then police department general fees, they wanted to actually remove their report fee because it is online, push the button. And then you get down to public service, water utility general fees. So we did update water utility structure fees.
So as you know, we met with the consultant here about a week ago or two weeks ago now. So what we're doing is moving, moving our rates, our water rates from a cost to, from a declining rate, which it is now, to a cost-to-serve rate. So an example, on a five-inch line, we'll be moving our, the monthly minimum from twenty-two twelve down to twenty-one sixty-nine. That won't include the first two thousand gallons anymore. And then the price per thousand gallons will go from eight thirty-seven down to six fifty-two. And then we won't, and then we don't have the declining rates like we used to where I believe, I don't have that in front now, but like, the first twenty-eight thousand was the, the eight thirty-seven, and then it went to like, to twenty-eight thousand to a hundred thousand, it was a difference on down the line. So which really, the only, the only business that really took advantage of the declining rate would have been a business like Creekstone. And so with Creekstone, we've been working with them on a marginal rate. And so what that'll do for them is they're, so on the marginal rate, we base, we base the rate they pay off of of the, because they use fifty percent of our water. So we're basing their rate off of of the percentage of the assets that they use within the water system. So like the water treatment plant, the operation and maintenance costs would be divided in half with them. So they basically use fifty or forty-eight point five percent of the, of the water treatment plant. That same, that's, so then that goes in with the north pressure zone, which is the, from Bryant Tower up north. They have ninety percent of what's used up there, the golf tower, the, and all that stuff is ninety percent of their use. The clear well back at the, at the water treatment plant is, again, forty-eight point five percent. They have a waste line that goes from the, we have a waste line that goes from the water treatment plant to the wastewater treatment plant for the reverse osmosis. And that, they pick up basically fifty percent of that. The cost of the water treatment plant, and so we worked on a depreciation cost. So we took the original capital cost, and we depreciated it over a period of years, depending on what the asset was, anywhere from twenty to forty years. And then we had an annualized, annualized price that we capitalized, and that's how we use, what we use to determine their costs in this. So, you know, the wastewater treatment plant was forty-eight percent, the golf tower was ninety percent. And then there's a water main from Creekstone to golf towers, ninety percent. So with that, they have a monthly minimum charge of three thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars, and then their charge per thousand gallons is three sixty-three. And so that's, working with them on that and get all that in place. So, so, you know, we've been working on a master plan to replace water lines and improve our water system. So these rates will let us get to that point. And what
Explain, Randy, what, what, you know, about, about that plan, you know, about the tower alley east and everything?
Yeah. So, so the water plant that we're getting ready to implement would be these pressure zone improvements. So that'll be the system on the side of the chestnut, putting in a new water storage, elevated water storage out there, two new water mains, one underneath the, under the walnut, one underneath chestnut, and one underneath Madison. So there's redundant water lines looping the system. And then we reconfigured the chestnut booster station so it can fill the water storage out there. Right now, there's pressure problems, and during a fire, there's not enough volume of water. And so this alleviates all of those issues. And then step two of this is a water main replacement project. So we'll start replacing water mains throughout the community, going behind the curb, getting them out from the streets, go behind the curb. We'll add additional personnel to the city. We have some equipment to purchase, and then we'll start taking that on ourselves, we'll start doing that ourselves. It'll be a lot cheaper for us to continually replace water lines than it will be to save up, hire a crew to come in and do it. And then, so this will be an ongoing thing. This will, you know, this isn't gonna be an overnight thing. It's gonna take, you know, decades to get where we wanna be. But this gets us started down the road and making those improvements where we need to, so.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Randy, on the sewer service rate, it's still gonna be two thousand gallons for one thousand, like, like the water?
Well, the sewer is based off of a three-month average and
Right. Yeah. But I mean, we're still gonna charge for two thousand gallons as a base versus a thousand for water.
There's no changes in that at this point, so.
Okay.
Well, that being said, I make a motion, resolution adopting by reference to city two thousand twenty-four comprehensive fee schedule, revealing resolution number two oh, two three day, show nine day, three five six nine.
Okay.
Second, any other discussion on it? Not on paper, say aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Okay, city manager updates.
Okay. So I put a project list of some of the internal projects that are going on. Nick put that together. And so is there any, anything that you want to point out on that?
I did.
Yeah, go ahead. If you have something of importance.
Can you put that on the screen so people can see what we're talking?
I don't know that they had, he had, they had that. I was, got that.
Can you tell me who you are?
Sure. Me, Rosio. I'm the project manager for the city.
Okay.
You've been told before that we've been awarded the two million eighty-nine thousand dollar loan forgiveness, actively working out with the green sand, green sand treatment. So that's something we're working with Birds and Mac, and we'll get the application in by October fifteenth, so we can move forward that process.
You might say, why, we're ready, we're spending our water. But you might say, why we're doing this, why we're applying for this grant. We're increasing our
Yeah, it's for manganese treatment.
Right.
Like, the increased, we have
Increase.
Emergency containment.
And then we're also actively working on a grant for the pickleball courts, to see that implemented here in Arc City. So that'd be fantastic. We are working with a local group to help facilitate those funds. We, we will be applying for the Summit Street to skyline, or Summit Street, skyline to radio lane. As far as completely rebuilding the street, we're assessing the intersection there at skyline and summit of making that complete concrete intersection. So the durability of the semi, semis coming through and increase in the semi-traffic. So we're taking a full assessment of that, but we'll be applying for this fall. We feel very comfortable with that. We were approved for the grant of the Sea Clip Madison from Eighth Street to the bridge. So we're excited for that process. And then we are closing out our last home for the C D B G housing grant. So once we close it out, which we'll bring up to the, to you commissioners here shortly, and we'll start the phase two process of identifying the next target area and start revitalizing those homes. So.
What about the hiking bikes, rather? We've been working there for some time. That's coming this fall, is it, to finalize it?
Checked in with them about two weeks ago. It was a very vague response.
Of course.
Everything is cracked, what they told me. So I've been in contact with KDOT and also our local
They've got everything they need now.
Correct. Yes, it's just
We have, engineers not giving enough information, wasn't back and forth, or they didn't get it, or something like it, wasn't it?
Yes.
Kind of cat and mouse game.
Yes.
Path you're talking
And hiking bike.
It's been in progress for five years.
Yeah.
K D H E.
But it's, it's final, it's gonna get finalized now.
And we haven't lost our grant.
No.
The money.
No, it's one point one five six million, one million, one hundred fifty, one million one hundred fifty-six thousand is what we get.
I'm gonna live long enough to see it.
I hope so. I'm hoping you ride the trail next summer.
I wonder if any of us will.
Okay, so that, that's what's going on there. So August twenty-second, so this Thursday, we have a kickoff meeting with Idea Tech, with, they'll have the city staff and some, like, Evergy, Kansas Gas, those types of folks there. They're ready to get started with their construction here really soon. So that's on the move. This Saturday, I believe, the twenty-fourth, there is a Relay for Life at Wilson Park starting at four o'clock. So I think we've all been touched by cancer one way or another. So that's be a good way to start and support that. And then, like Nick just said, on the third, at the meeting on the third, we have the C B T housing rehabilitation grant close out. And then we'll be starting to work on the next round for another three hundred thousand dollar housing grant and pick another target area in the community and try to help that area. I got some, in front of you, there's a save the date for a regional issues forum. So that'll be part of REAP. So it'll be with the state legislators and then elected officials from different communities around South Central Kansas. And the REAP community partners are some of the larger businesses and things that operate in the area that, so anyway, they're inviting everybody to come together. They'll talk about job growth, the business expansion, the skills and training, education, and infrastructure, basically how, all the things that we do to work together as public, private, to help the economy. And then also there'll be some collaborating about the legislative platform for twenty twenty-five. Then on September thirtieth, the local water consult meetings will be around the state. The one on the thirtieth will be in Wichita for our, for our region. And again, they're, they're working on implementing the state water plan, which actually been working on this for a long time. And I think we're in a spot now where there's some water issues that maybe they can get it pushed across the line. But this will be a chance for us to get together with other, other cities in our area and learn what the state's up to and what they're working on and give input and that type of thing. And then, again, on the reminder, on the October tenth to the twelfth, we have the league conference coming up. And then, I know you guys like some good reading to go to sleep at with night. So I've got the Center for Economic Development and Business Research just released their twenty twenty-four Kansas Population Age Report. So it, it's kind of a forecast of our population age for the state of Kansas from twenty twenty-four to twenty seventy-two, kind of what they're forecasting things to do. And again, the things that we do here, just like the housing plants, stuff like that, we're, that's, that's stuff we're planning for the next twenty, thirty. It's, it's not us, it's the future generations of these things we're planning for. So just like the water systems and stuff we use now, we're put in by the citizens that were here, you know, eighty, hundreds of years ago. So, so again, when we're making these plans, kind of having a forecast of what age groups and how it's gonna move around, the demographics are gonna move around, is helpful for us to, when we're making plans. Just like one lady said, you know, about her grandkids, and we're gonna be, are we planning for a bunch of retired people, or we're planning for families and that type of thing. So anyway, it's good information to have in front of you. And then finally, we had our Department of Labor Safety Visit on August thirteenth. So we went around to all of our facilities with the inspector. And overall, it was So we went around to all of our facilities with, with the inspector and overall it was pretty well. Obviously, there's always a few things that they find need to work on. There was nothing serious, it was minor things that we need to address and the policy and procedures and, but.
They're never going to give you a perfect record anyway.
No.
Poor card.
Well, we're waiting to get one anyways. It's our job to find something wrong.
There was, some facilities weren't inspecting their fire extinguishers on a monthly basis that we did it on yearly. So getting that in sync, you know, just some things like that, that was the kind of things that we were. The, 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 the books that we have are, oh gosh, I'm going to blame it, the.
SDS sheets?
Yes, there you go.
SDS sheet now.
Yeah. Some of those books weren't in, in covers that were really visible, that they were.
Yes. Morton has got them on iPads. All the SDS sheets are on iPads. The way I could do is go up there, type it in, and it pops up. And so you got just one little book there or a computer and you're done, you don't have to worry about the books anymore.
But so that's a couple of examples of things that they found. Other than that, we were really good shape, so. And that's all I have.
Okay. Anything from later? I've got one thing, that Senator Rand's going to be at RC Hospital Thursday at four o'clock, four, four-thirty. Let's go through our hospital, since we're the first REH hospital in Kansas. So if you want to go to our hospital and talk to us and stuff about.
Who's that?
Thursday, Thursday, Thursday at four o'clock.
Okay.
Four o'clock?
Yeah.
So that's kind of interesting. Okay, now, comments from the audience for that, it's not all the agenda we got last year.
And the first one listed is Vicki Jackson, thirteen North Third, would like to talk about Wilson Park.
Hello. Been a long time since I have attended one of these meetings. I know three of you barely know, two of you not at all. My absence is due because I work on other projects around town. I see that I probably will need to start coming again. I will. I'm here to talk to you about the property north of Wilson Park. I see that the commission is again talking about selling part of that property off for housing in the form of houses or duplexes. And I am one hundred percent opposed to selling off one inch of that property for houses or duplexes. We have an opportunity here, and have had since it got torn down, to use that. That's what we should do. They're not making land anymore. We're not going to have another opportunity to use that size of property in the center of our city. That's sure, people are typically. Yet for the six.
Playground equipment.
That's what people are looking to bring to advantage to. There are other properties that we just need in this town to develop for housing. Not only is there the. That all are working on to develop. There are, there's a bank, a ton of properties we're going to be able to sell. Things with the city, besides all the grants. I'm well aware of the master plan done back in two thousand. Then, I didn't like it then, I don't like it now. We can use other properties in this town to fund what we need to do. They have property there. Approximately three hundred and fifty feet. You start chunking, taking. If they're in duplexes or housing, use it by order of math. And instead of having some great ideas in that spot, the master plan had a lot of great ideas. We can do it then, we don't have to live with what we put in there. We don't have to do it right now. We can do it little at a time as we get grants. There's a lot of people in this town that are trying to get some great ideas. My favorite, I don't have little children, I don't have grandchildren. There's a lot of people in this town that want to have a. I think we should listen to that. There's nothing wrong with that at all. There's other things, talking about a pickleball. My favorite is this town needs a new library. And that is the perfect spot for it. Originally, they were talking about a community center. Conventions come in and maybe makes, make some money for our town. There's a lot of possibilities that we could do and that we should do over time as grants and other monies become available, not run out and raise everybody's taxes all of a sudden. We could do that, but we can't do that if we chunk it off to little houses or duplexes. We won't get it back. Now is the time. You can't, where it's going to run out, just leave it. You guys need to really listen to Mr. Ken's stuff. He was involved in the. Grants.
He knows where to go get money.
Loans.
Where to get loans.
My grants.
We don't need loans.
Well, I don't know that he does know where to get grants. I thought I heard him say he did.
We thought he heard, said that too, but he was saying.
No, he did talk about loans, he did, but he also talked about grants. So you need to listen to him.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to get on.
Talking about having a hearing, a public hearing. On, on what to do with that property?
No. No, not right now.
No.
So are we talking about selling part of that property?
Yeah.
Why was it in the paper that we're talking about duplexes?
No, no, there, there was talk of duplexes on that property.
What we, what we talked about was that, that back in two thousand seventeen, you know, they were talking about doing five duplexes up the north end, creating a tax district. And taking that money, which had been about fifty thousand dollars a year, go back to Wilson Park area where it'd be a self-supporting park, that's what we were talking about, you know? That was back, you know, two thousand seventeen.
You're not talking about it now?
Well, yeah, we have been talking about it.
Are you going to have a public hearing?
We'll have to when we do that, you know?
When it, when it comes time for it, we will.
Well, I'm just asking the timeframe.
We don't know. We don't know just yet.
If it's meant to me, we'd do it tomorrow. These guys are talking me out of it.
And you do know the master plan does include a, a convention center and the library along with the duplexes? You do know that?
Along with getting rid of that road?
Master plan, yes. There's not enough room for that.
Yes, there is. Or the architects wouldn't have put it in. I mean, we, we had professionals do this.
I don't agree, Charlie. There, there's, there's, there's a lot of things that people want on that property that weren't in the master plan and we didn't go forward with the master plan. It, we're in a new world now, that's pre-COVID. And we, there's a lot of people that got a lot of ideas about that. So just because it's in the old master plan doesn't mean that's something we got to go with.
Well, you're, you're exactly right.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
There's five minutes, honestly, there's five minutes, we've got ten people doing, that's going to be another hour we're going to be here. So we're running out to shut you, slow you down.
Talking about having a public hearing?
No.
No. You got that from Arc City Ask and Answer. Probably wouldn't get my information from there anymore.
They talked like a public hearing down the.
On Tuesday, they were a hundred percent wrong on that.
There was a lot of wrong answers on that for sure.
Absolutely.
But there were some right answers too.
I've never seen one. Oh, a block from it.
Okay, well, are you suggesting that there's a lot of people that don't feel the same way about that property?
I'm suggesting we probably need to have this for another time.
Okay. Okay, I can do that. I'll be back.
All right. Thank you.
In here, thirteen thirteen North First, they'd like to talk about electric carts.
Mayor, Commissioner, I'm Ken Herter, I'm afraid you all know me. Live thirteen thirteen North First. Back in July, I went to a workstation and brought up the electric cart to give you some information. And at that time, you asked Randy and the chief, I think he left, he's not here anymore. To dig into it and come up with something. Well, three weeks ago, KTV in Wichita had on the evening news Valley Center has drafted an ordinance and they're changing their ordinance and they're, tonight, they voted tonight to adopt electric carts in Valley Center.
I might say this, you weren't at a last meeting.
No.
And he was here, the chief was here, and I brought that up, we got that ordinance, it was from Valley Center, and he said we'll be looking at it and hopefully here the next, I don't know, I don't, I can't guarantee the next meeting or two, but he's going to write something up. He called around several different towns that has that. He said the only complaint that was, was this drivers that weren't aged, under age drivers. That's the biggest problem we'll have, so, you know, we'll have to crank down on that. But that was brought up the last meeting.
If, if you'll let me continue here, this is a draft of the ordinance. I read that and that is the best draft I've seen. They did a good job on that. This is a list of all the cities in Kansas that are allowing this. Valley Center tonight, and I soon hope be Arcane City. If you'll let me move on. After seeing that on K-ten News, I come into Randy's office the next day and spoke to him and brought that to his attention about Valley Center. And I asked Randy if him and the chief of police would contact city administrator in Valley Center. Randy told me, he says, I know him personally, he's a great guy. He said, I will. So I left it at that until yesterday morning, because that was a commission meeting coming up. I called the city administrator in Valley Center. He's the nicest guy I've talked to in a long time. I guess it's because he didn't know me personally, I don't know. But he's willing to help us. Randy, ever one of you, the chief police, he's willing for you to call him and visit with him?
Ken, I don't think we're against it. I think we're just wanting to get something in front of us where that, that pal goes with. I, I think for the most part, you've got us one over or arm twisted over.
Well, I would like for you to read that draft because that's very detailed. And I was impressed by that.
He's, I got that from him a few weeks ago. It was, they were still working on it, the one I got from him, so I'll, I'll compare this to the.
Okay. I just printed that yesterday.
Okay, because he said they were still.
That was yesterday, I pulled that off. And I'm not here to beat up on you guys, but I was impressed by all the cities. Derby is close to us, there are twenty-five thousand people, they, they have them, so. My concern was in the past, maybe a little bit of foot dragging was because they thought they weren't safe or anything like that, or some bad actors, you know?
And he said he checked, I don't know how many cities he checked, with several of them. They didn't have any problems with anything on the electric carts, but underage kids driving them.
Yes.
Only complaint they had.
Once, and once the chief gets this done with, with Larry, I think he's going to go through and.
Okay. I wanted to use one analogy here, just from my personal standpoint of the times we're living in today, if I may. To allow something not to move forward in a community on account of some bad actors is wrong. So if we were to follow that as a guideline, you wouldn't be driving in the state of Kansas no more. You wouldn't have a driver's license because of trucks. No insurance, no tags, no driver's license. I mean, you know, we have to.
Don't punish the law-abiding system because of the bad apples.
You made my point and I'll shut up. Okay.
Thanks, Ken.
When you say underage drivers, are you talking twelve to fourteen or fifteen?
I'm a guess, I'm assuming we're going sixteen down.
Does Arc City have a law, a rule, a code that they can't drive in? And is it enforced?
This, this plan has to have drivers.
Yeah, this will, this will have to be. Yeah, right now, it's against state law for anybody.
About the cyber sites that, you know, are up and down the streets and things?
Yeah, right, right now, it's state law, nobody can do it. That's what we're going to change. Right now, it's state law that nobody can do it. And the change will, in the change will have the license requirements.
It'll have license requirements.
Yeah, whatever, whatever.
So what, what our officers in the community need to do is if they're illegal, they come over and ticket them.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
So Richard Hensley, and I don't know that Richard.
He left.
He left.
And then John Cybert signed off. And then Jim Bossy. So that's on the list, so I think they pulled up.
All right.
Gosh, I could have talked for a minute.
Thanks, Ken.
Well, I, I'll second that motion. All favors say aye.